Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's December 4th, 2025 open session, and it is really great to be back. Madam Secretary, would you like to take the roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Kozart.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer will be absent today. Commissioner Stidham.
Here.
Commissioner Argo, I believe is on her way. Vice Chair Levinbach.
Here.
Chairman Scharf.
Here.
Commissioner Blair. Don't believe he's joined yet. Commissioner Tonsal Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Dixon.
Present.
Commissioner Cash.
Present.
Commissioner Henderson.
Present.
Commissioner Giacetti.
Joined yet.
Marcel Acosta, Executive Director, and Diane Sullivan, Director of Current Planning, is, are also in the meeting.
In your opinion, do we have a quorum? Noting the presence of a quorum, I would like to call today's meeting to an order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available as usual in a few days in video on the NCPC's website. If there's no objection, the agenda is posted, is adopted as the order of business for today. And let's, let's begin as usual with the Pledge of Allegiance. Is Michael leading it or no?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item two is the report of the chair. First of all, I need to apologize if my voice is a little raspy. I'm getting over a brutal cold, as I think most of Washington, DC is as well. It's been a, been a rough few days. I want to start by noting, speaking for a minute just about the government shutdown, which obviously affected our operations. We missed two meetings this fall, which given the number of projects that are moving through this commission, given the work that we're currently doing, including work between meetings, this was an incredible disruption, one that we obviously hope isn't repeated because we have a lot coming to us in the months ahead. I think today's agenda, which in an ideal world, we would have had several months or a couple of months ago, really speaks to that. We have some really exciting projects before the commission today, ranging from obviously lighting in one of the most significant in some respects buildings in Washington, DC, Union Station. We have two monument projects at various stages of completion, the Women's Suffrage Memorial, as well as the Fallen Journalists Memorial, as well as just other projects which may not be as high profile, but are incredibly important to the continued vitality and future of the, the city of Washington, DC and federal spaces in the, in the broader region. So I certainly hope that we don't face a similar shutdown again in the coming months. I think it would be a real shame if the work of this commission, as well as obviously other instrumentality departments, agencies of the federal government as well, were disturbed in that way again. I want to speak briefly to the ballroom project, which I know has been the subject of a lot of press attention in the previous few months, particularly as the commission was not regularly meeting and didn't have full functionality of its, of its staff and personnel. I've been told by colleagues at the White House, and I'm sort of screened from, from planning itself over there, I'm told that the ballroom plans will be submitted to NCPC this month in December. After plans are submitted, those plans will obviously move through the NCPC process at, at a, a normal and deliberative pace. I'm excited for NCPC to play a constructive role in what I expect will be one of the most important projects in, in the true core of Washington, DC for many years to come. Once plans are submitted, where obviously we will be able to provide details, I'm sure the White House will also be providing more details about the exact specifications of the ballroom project and what they're looking at doing. And once plans are submitted, that's really when the role of this commission and its professional staff will begin. As I noted at a previous meeting, it's longed in the position of NCPC that, based on the National Capitol Planning Act, we simply do not have jurisdiction over demolition and site preparation work. That what we're really concerned about here is, is visible architecture, is above-ground build. And I expect, based on what I've been told, that we are going to be able to play a constructive role in, in this, in this project as it becomes timely for us to do so. So that's, that's exciting. But I say all of that, mindful of the fact that I don't want the ballroom to be a distraction from the other very important work that this commission has been doing and is, is continuing to do. I think when you look at the many projects underway in Washington, DC, in the broader region, that are at various stages of completion, and some of the longer-term planning that we're currently doing in areas south of the Mall, South Capitol, and really just throughout the region, it's important to note that, that NCPC has a lot of work to do in, in the months ahead. And I, for one, am excited for, for what we have planned. And that's really all I have. I guess Agenda Item Three is the report of our Executive Director, Marcel Acosta. Marcel, would you like to take things from there?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Scharf, and welcome back, Commissioners. I have just one item today, in the interest of time. We bid farewell to urban planner Krishan Smith, who's been part of our team for over five years, and recently accepted a position with Amazon's Real Estate Department. Krishan led the development of the commission's annual federal capital improvements program, and served as NCPC's representative to the DC Board of Zoning Adjustment. We appreciate Krishan's many contributions to NCPC. On behalf of the staff and our colleagues, we wish him all the best and his due role at Amazon. My full report is in your packets, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for that, Marcel. And just speaking personally, our incredible loss is obviously Amazon's great gain. And that's, that's exciting news, although unfortunate for us certainly. Agenda Item Four is the legislative update. Megan, would you like to?
Yes.
Update us in that respect?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Scharf. I have one legislative item to report on this month, House Joint Resolution 133, which was a joint resolution passed by the House on November 18th, the Senate on November 20th, and signed by the President this week on December 2nd as Public Law 11946. The resolution asks the Secretary of the Interior to authorize the display of United States semi-quintcentennial materials and other significant artifacts, digital content, film footage, and associated audio and imagery in and around the vicinity of the National Mall, including being projected onto the surface of the Washington Monument for five nights of public display. The proposed displays would be authorized beginning on New Year's Eve this year and ending on January 5th, 2026, as an initiation of celebrations for the 250th anniversary of the United States. That concludes my legislative report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. But my understanding is this is basically, there is, there's, there are statutes on point that prohibit most, if any, irregular displays on, sort of, on monuments, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
This statute provides an exception for American 250-related displays and demonstrations, is that right?
Yes, so the resolution is authorizing the secretary to make those exceptions for the 250th, for those specific five nights.
Understood. Thank you. Agenda Item Five, moving on, is, is the Consent Calendar. There are three items on this month's Consent Calendar. The first is to approve preliminary and final site development plans for the Smithsonian Metro Rail Station vent modifications. The second is to approve preliminary and final building plans for the Theodore Roosevelt Federal Building T-Mobile antenna modifications. And the final item is to approve preliminary site development plans for the Clara Barton Parkway cantilever replacement. All of these projects were included in materials circulated prior to this meeting. Do any Commissioners present have any questions or discussion or? Thank you very much, Commissioner. Is there a second on the floor?
Second.
Is, I can, sorry, threw me for a loop there, Commissioner. I was expecting vigorous discussion of the T-Mobile antenna modifications. Madam Secretary, can you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote?
Yes. The motion was made by Commissioner Dixon and seconded by Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Levinbach?
Yes.
Chairman Scharf?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair? Commissioner Tonsal Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacetti? Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. In addition to the items on the Consent Calendar, we have three voting items and then an informational presentation, all on the calendar for open session today. Agenda Item 6A is a request to approve comments on concept plans for the Washington Union Station lighting upgrades. Would you like to proceed? And we have with us here, is it Lee Webb? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairman Scharf, and members of the commission. The Union Station Redevelopment Corporation has submitted concept plans for proposed improvements to the lighting at Washington Union Station, located at 50 Massachusetts Avenue Northeast in Washington, DC, just north of the US Capitol complex. This concept submission outlines upgrades to both interior and exterior lighting systems. However, as a reminder, NCPC's review is limited to the exterior improvements. As this is a concept review, the focus of today's presentation and analysis is to receive commission comments and feedback prior to preparing the next submission. In this case, the focus of the review is understanding the appropriateness of the project for the context, understanding any particular unique or complex issues that need to be addressed, and identifying any stakeholders that may need to be further involved. As such, in today's presentation, staff has prepared comments on the concept plan for the commission to consider and give the applicant as guidance for further project development. Here, you can see circled in yellow, Union Station and its location at the intersection of Massachusetts, Louisiana, and Delaware avenues, just north of the US Capitol and the National Mall. The Union Station Redevelopment Corporation oversees the station operations, which also includes maintaining the station as a multimodal transportation center and supporting retail and amenities within the station. Designed by Daniel Burnham, a member of the MacMillan Commission, Union Station was completed in 1908. It was placed on the National Rest of Historic Places in 1969. It is described in the MacMillan Plan as "the grand gateway to the Capitol." The station continues to evoke the planning and architectural history of the MacMillan Plan. Union Station is the second busiest station in the Amtrak network. The station is an important capital gateway announcing entry into the capital city as designated in NCPC's urban design element in the comprehensive plan. This project would help advance Executive Order 14252, making the District of Columbia safe and beautiful, as it would ensure federal buildings and lands are adequately uplit and help beautify public spaces. As such, staff supports the applicant's goals to improve the lighting at Washington Union Station, to enhance visitor safety at night, while emphasizing the architectural features of the station, along with the general lighting approach as provided in the submission materials. This concept submission outlines upgrades to both interior and exterior lighting systems. On this slide, you can see the current lighting condition of the main entry on the left side of the screen, and a rendered view with the proposed lighting enhancements on the right. The exterior scope encompasses the southern facade facing Columbus Circle, adjacent pedestrian sidewalks and drop-off lanes, and the front colonnade, carriage porch, and the connecting loggia. The interior scope includes lighting improvements and supplemental fixtures within the main halls and retail concourse. The design approach is guided by three foundational objectives, including public safety and security, energy efficiency, and architectural enhancement. Here is an overall site plan of the station, showing the areas of the proposed lighting enhancements with Columbus Circle on the bottom of the slide. And here is an additional slide showing the existing lighting conditions of Union Station as you approach from Columbus Circle on the left side of the image, and a rendered view with the proposed lighting enhancements on the right. For the entry approach area to the station from Columbus Circle, the applicant intends to replace 25 twin-20 light poles and fixtures with additional building facade lighting, as well as replacing six DDOT poles, six NPS poles, and 13 Union Station poles. The project includes upgrading the internal optics of the 18 globe poles, seven on the west and 11 on the east, and replacing the bulbs within the 22 single fixture lamp poles within Columbus Circle. This slide shows an image of the new light poles in Columbus Circle with a lighting attachment circled in yellow, which will be used to enhance the building's facade's illumination. The poles will match the existing twin-20 poles currently found on the site around the station. The project includes installing accent lighting for the statues and text panels along the south elevation of the station. And while we support the intent of the improvements, we do think additional refinement is needed to ensure the new lighting isn't too bright or too uniform across the main entrance into the station from Columbus Circle, as noted in our recommendations. As part of the goals of the project, the lighting should allow visitors to perceive and distinguish the architectural elements and features across the facade, so the lighting should be adjusted to allow for this distinction while minimizing light loss and spillage. Other components of the lighting improvements include the addition of new low-profile spots to illuminate the escalator and door thresholds, thresholds, with housing to match the ceiling color in the loggia. This image shows the current condition on the left and the proposed improvements on the right side of the screen. Low-profile linear LED fixtures are proposed to be added on the top surface of cornices at the spring point of the vault, excuse me, of the vault arches in the carriage porch and the colonnade along the main entry, as shown on this slide. The new fixtures will be hidden from view and attached through mortar joints. Therefore, staff commends the applicant for the use of lighting fixtures and mounting equipment that are not easily, easily visible from most vantage points and are reversible to avoid long-term impacts to the historic fabric of the structure. While not under the commission's review, purview, we did want to show you an image of the interior of the station with the new proposed lighting enhancements. So here's an image showing the, the west hall, and on the right you see the current, I mean, the proposed, and on the left, the current conditions. As part of agency discussion with the applicant prior to the submission to the, to the agency, it was suggested that the barrel vault should also be considered for lighting enhancements as an important architectural feature of the station. Therefore, we recommend the applicant evaluate whether lighting of the barrel vault would be appropriate, given its importance as an architectural element of the station. And in addition, staff requests, as part of the next review, the applicant provide additional renderings from other key view sheds, including Elf Street Northwest and Northeast, and Louisiana Avenue Northwest at Constitution Avenue, to show what illumination of the barrel vault might look like. Staff notes that the proposed project aligns with NCP's lighting policy, LED streetlight performance criteria, and the overall Monumental Core Streetscape guide. In particular, the applicant intends to use white light at levels following NCPC's guidance. In addition, the lighting will have the ability to change colors. Under, under NCPC's lighting policy, the station is identified as a Tier Two federal urban building, and therefore should utilize soft white light, white lighting up to 3,000 Kelvin. Under NCPC's, NCPC's lighting policy, Tier Two buildings should not be lit in such a manner as to detract from Tier One buildings, such as the US Capitol Building and the White House. As the applicant is replacing the existing bulbs with new LED bulbs in existing fixtures, as well as the replacement poles, the applicant will have the ability to use color lighting and has expressed a desire to do so up to 30 calendar days a year. This is consistent with NCPC's lighting policy, which allows for temporary color light and projected images on Tier Two buildings. As the applicant further refines the design, staff recommends that the applicant work with review agencies to develop guidance as to when and how the use of color lighting may be used, and requests the applicant provide further details and renderings as part of the next submission regarding how color might be applied. And finally, as the applicant continues to refine the project, staff recommends the applicant continue to coordinate with NPS, DDOT, and WAMADA regarding any improvements proposed within their adjacent areas of jurisdiction. In addition, staff requests that the applicant work with the DC State Historic Preservation Office and consulting parties to develop a management plan that outlines specific guidelines for the frequency and duration of color lighting use, if deemed appropriate. So overall, staff believes the proposed lighting enhancements will improve safety at Washington Union Station for visitors and users, and will also allow for the architectural features to be more appreciated and understood. We look forward to working with the applicant to refine the application in a timely manner, so this important project can be implemented at one of the most important gateways to the capital city. As I've covered the executive director's recommendations in my presentation, I will not repeat them for time, but they are here for reference. And I would also like to introduce Doug Carr with the Union Station Redevelopment Corporation, who would like to say a few words to the commission. And the design team is also here to help answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Doug Carr, and I'm the President and CEO of Union Station Redevelopment Corporation. On behalf of the USRC and our Board of Directors, I want to thank Mr. Webb and the National Capital Planning Commission for their consideration of our projects, along with the other organizations, including SHIPO and CFA, which we have been consulting with. We also appreciate the general interest in this important and exciting project, which will represent a huge improvement to a storied and iconic historic property. Union Station is a unique place. It is more than just a train station. It is the heart of transportation infrastructure in the DMV region. It is the most trafficked place in all of DC, handling more than 30 million people a year, more than any of the airports in the region. Beyond that, it is also a place of local significance, being the primary multimodal transportation hub and gateway for visitors, commuters, and local residents who live and work in the district. It is also a regional, has regional economic significance, representing the southern anchor of the Northeast Corridor and a gateway to Point South, connecting people to places across the East Coast and beyond, while also serving as WAMADA Metro's busiest station and end-of-line destinations for regional commuter rails, mark, dairy, and bus passengers. Lastly, it also has national significance. As noted, designed by Daniel Burnham and opened in 1908 as part of the City Beautiful Movement, Union Station symbolizes American architectural grandeur and transportation innovation. It is listed on the National Historic Register of Historic Places and is a Tier Two designated landmark in DC. We firmly believe that our passengers and visitors deserve a safe, beautiful, and welcoming environment, and are confident that this project delivers on multiple fronts. But we are also sensitive to the historic nature of the property and the impacts that lighting can present, and the need to manage light, including brightness, color temperature, and controls. Our team has worked for over a year to balance these needs and are confident that our design does just that. Our proposal is guided by three main objectives. Number one, to improve public safety and security in and around the station, and to create a more welcoming environment for our passengers. Number two, to enhance and honor the historic character and aesthetics of this iconic building. And number three, to reduce energy consumption through more energy-efficient LED fixtures and modern focused optics, which precisely direct light to the very specific areas of the building that are intended, and with use of a modern lighting control systems, which can be adjusted at any time and dimmed or shut off during non-operating hours. Over the years, many studies and comments have addressed individual aspects of the station's lighting. Some focus on operations, others on energy efficiency, public safety, historic preservation, and architectural expression. While valuable, these efforts only addressed isolated pieces. Instead of continuing to treat each issue separately, we have developed a comprehensive lighting master plan, one that aligns with NCPC lighting policy and framework, draws on past studies, and meets the full range of regulatory requirements while celebrating the quality of the historic building. Our proposed lighting plan is intentionally organized into six distinct areas, allowing for a phased delivery and implementation of the project as funding becomes available. In conclusion, the goal of this concept submission is to establish a shared and balanced master plan for the station in Columbus Circle, one that strengthens public safety, improves sustainability, and reinforces, reinforces the station's historic presence within the Monument Core while respecting the lighting hierarchy established by NCPC. Again, we very much appreciate the commission's consideration of this important and exciting project, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Doug. I just got one question, probably for you, Doug. What's expected time to completion once, well, once this project, this project is approved? How quickly do you think the entire lighting plan is implemented across?
Across Union Station and the surrounding area?
So I have a specific answer. We have a project schedule, probably in the neighborhood of about 36 weeks. We are continuing to work through with the organizations, NCPC. We're very appreciative of the thoughtful consideration and the comments that we've received, not only from the NCPC staff, but CFA and SHIPO.
Sure.
And we're continuing to work through that process. But once we are mobilized, we have approximately 36-week schedule, project schedule.
That's awesome. Thank you. Do any other Commissioners have questions on the project? Yes, ma'am. Oh, sorry, I shouldn't.
Sorry. So I just had two questions, and maybe this is even something you bring to the next review. I noticed that the twin-20s and maybe other fixtures had additional fixtures attached, but I didn't see those in the renderings. In the renderings, the twin-20s looked very clean. So I think understanding what that visual looks like with the additional attachments would be really helpful, unless you can speak to it now.
I would say I think that's perhaps an image of the rendering. They are meant to be very slender fixtures, which will add a certain profile, will blend in, and you won't be able to see them. To the point of renderings, renderings are precise up to a point. You know, as we worked through some of the comments and feedback that we've received, including color temperature, creating texture to the building, all of the elements that we also are really desiring to achieve. We have a very highly controllable system. So some of that may be the imprecision inherent with the rendering, but it's also a very intentional design on our part to be very slender and narrow, minimizing not only on the twin-20s, but as Mr. Webb noted, a lot of the colonnade, the west carriage porch that we call, really minimizing physical impact to the building and really concealing a lot of the light source, so it's not visible throughout to the public.
So I think in your next submission, if you include, include it in the renderings or in some fashion, right, an ability to understand what that fixture will look like. I agree that at night, it will probably blend away and you won't see it, but during the day, it will be visible. So getting a sense of what that look would be, it would be really helpful in moving forward. The other question I had was related to sort of the hierarchy, and the presentation spoke of this being a Tier Two compared to the Capitol that's Tier One. I think understanding the lighting scenario that you've developed in relation to the lighting of the Capitol and ensuring to us that that hierarchy is being met would also be really helpful.
Understood. And yes, that is our intent. We have our design team, but the non-technical aspect is, that was a driving principle of our project, that we will not be overlit relative to the Tier One buildings, specifically the Capitol, which is within our view corridor and shed. And that is the intent of the project. Again, subject to fine-tuning controls, but that is absolutely the intent.
Okay. We look forward to seeing more. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Commissioner Kozart?
Thank you. So I'm wondering, and my question is kind of how much of the additional illumination is related to using LED fixtures versus kind of this uplighting? And even if you could kind of ballpark it, you know, 50/50, 60/40, something like that, just so we get a sense of the contribution?
If I understand your question is what percent is uplighting or, or I'm sorry?
The LED, like using LED fixtures, modern fixtures, what percent of that additional illumination is attributed? what percent of that additional illumination is attributable to that compared to the uplighting?
Okay. Appreciate the comment. I think the notion, and I want to be clear, there's very limited uplighting in the project in itself, but how we are leveraging the Twin 20 poles, we're leveraging as much of the existing infrastructure as we can, which does not have a physical intervention on the building. That was one of our driving policies. So we're not making many attachments or any physical intervention in the building. And we're really leveraging the existing poles, which we will recreate and replicate, and are with a very focused, modern optics, applying light to the building with a lot of cutoff angles, so there's no light spillage or anything happening out there. So it's coming from a mounted pole from across the street, applied to the object. So there's very limited actual uplighting, only limited to the architectural features to kind of create that distinguishing some of the architectural features such as the statuary.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes. So I can't let a meeting go away where we talk about light poles and don't bring up 5G. But one of the things that we haven't talked about here for a while is 5G. And I notice you're doing a lot of light pole replacement, and I don't see anything about 5G on here. And we're talking about Union Station, where the future is probably going to hold a lot of like cars that will rely on 5G. Are there any plans to integrate that into any of the poles? Is there going to be vaulting, anything like that? Is that a separate plan? And if so, why? Because we're kind of doing the poles here. So has there been any thoughts of that? And is that something that we might come back to us later?
Sure. Thank you for the question. I think there are initiatives underway for internal communications, cell communications via distributed antenna system, ADAS. So that is something we're definitely looking at, primarily located within the building to facilitate kind of the services that you're saying, not the driving ones, obviously. Outside, we can explore kind of how we can support within the boundaries and limits of the station. And if these are opportunities, we'd be able to look into that. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Yes, sir.
I want to be clear that there is a mixture of LED and other light fixtures are of the new replacements going to be LED pretty much totally.
I believe, yeah, total LED. I think what the other fixtures are, to the point with Ms. Kozart, we're really leveraging, you know, particularly think about the colonnade. They have existing beautiful glass domes. What we are doing is leveraging the glass dome, replacing the exact dome. We are just really improving the internal optics of that with modern technology. So everywhere we can, we are leveraging the existing historic aspects of the building and really just improving with modern technology and lighting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you maybe just answered my question, but for clarity, I heard you say you're reusing existing features. How are you going to be able to control like dimmability? Because as you said, rendering light is one of the most difficult things to do. So it might look good in this rendering, and then you get it on, and you're like, holy cow, this is way too bright. Are you able to adjust that once you've put the equipment in?
Correct. The lighting control system would be fully controllable, full color spectrum, and it'll be, you know, particularly hues of white, where we can go anywhere from, I believe, 2,000 up to higher. There is a limitation of 3,000.
So you can change color as well?
It can be fully programmable, tunable, God's would what would be called a tunable white solution and programmable. So programming is controlling on off, and then the tunable is controlling color temperature and contrast.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one other question if nobody else has any. Doug, have you guys looked at additional lighting on the barrel vault? Is that something that's been considered already? What's sort of your position as of now on that issue?
Yes, we have, and we've received that feedback through some of the other consultation. So our team is actively looking at lighting on the vault. We are also looking at policy about how we would use some of the colored lighting and putting in place proactive management and even enhancing existing policy. So those are two feedbacks that we have received from both SHIPO consultation, CFA, and NCPC consultation, and that work is underway.
Interesting. Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments from commissioners? We do have, one individual is registered to provide public testimony on this issue. That's Lee Meyer from Dark Sky DC. Mr. Meyer, you have five minutes to provide your testimony on this issue. Please, but please proceed whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Scherff. Like you, I'm getting over a cold, so I'm losing my voice a little. And also, I have some construction going on in the background. Please, I apologize in advance. Good afternoon, commission. My name is Lee Meyer, and I am testifying on behalf of the DC chapter of Dark Sky International. With almost 200,000 members in more than 70 countries, Dark Sky International provides leadership, tools, and resources to reduce light pollution and promote responsible outdoor lighting that is environmentally responsible and functional. Dark Sky International is globally recognized for designating Dark Sky Parks and Dark Sky Communities. The core members of Dark Sky, of the Dark Sky DC chapter have been active in DC for many years. We've worked with DDOT on the DC Street Light LED conversion project, successfully convincing city officials to lower the color temperature of the LED streetlights. We worked with members of the Lights Out campaign to promote turning out lights at night to reduce bird collisions with buildings. And at our request, Mayor Bowser has issued in the past proclamations recognizing Dark Sky Week. The National Capitol Commission, Capitol Planet Commission's Washington DC Union Station Lighting Upgrade Plan aims to improve the lighting at one of the city's most important transportation hubs. While we employ the effort to lower energy costs, the plans will create light pollution. Light pollution impacts human health, disrupts wildlife, and contributes to climate change. It is crucial to evaluate the lighting aspects of this plan through the lens of Dark Sky International's lighting principles. These principles, as I'll discuss, advocate for responsible outdoor lighting that minimizes light pollution, enhances public safety, and preserves night sky visibility. Dark Sky International's five key principles for responsible outdoor lighting are as follows. One, useful. Use light only if it is needed. All lights should have a clear purpose. Consider how lights will affect wildlife and their habitats. Two, low level. Light should not be brighter than necessary. Provide the minimum illumination necessary for the task, avoiding overlighting. Three, targeted. Use shielded fixtures. Direct light downward to reduce glare and prevent light trespass. Four, warm colored lights. Use lighting with lower correlated color temperature to lessen environmental and health impacts. Five, controlled. Use controls such as timers and motion sensors to ensure that light is there when you need it and dimmed or turned off when it is not. The Union Station plan, as it appears in the renderings, looks very overlit. There are very few lighting specifications in the plan. For example, lumen, wattage, outage, bug ratings, et cetera. And without this information, it's impossible to analyze this plan. But with that said, general observations can be made about how the plan could benefit from integrating Dark Sky International lighting principles. Eliminate uplighting outdoor spaces. Eliminate uplighting outdoor spaces. All existing lights should be fully shielded and direct light downwards where it is needed, not into the sky. Specifically, eliminate the GVA FL 100 and 200 fixtures that will wash the building facade and produce light spill and light pollution. Ask the NCPC lighting consultant to identify a historic-looking shielded bulk cutoff replacement for all glow light historic fixtures. Set stricter color temperature limits. New LED sources should be less than 2,700 K and preferably 2,200 K for accent or facade lighting. Implement dynamic controls, dimming, and curfew schedules. Require lighting to be dimmed or turned off entirely in off-peak late night hours, for instance, midnight to 5:00 AM for non-essential lighting. Essential lighting for safety and navigation may remain, but at reduced levels. Use occupancy or motion sensors in less traffic zones. Education. Ensure that the lighting upgrades comply with the five Dark Sky principles to protect health and the environment. By publicly embracing Dark Sky principles, Union Station has the potential to serve as a model for responsible lighting in DC. Informational signage and outreach can educate visitors about the benefits of Dark Sky friendly lighting, promoting wider application throughout Washington DC. In conclusion, integrating Dark Sky International's lighting principles into the NCPC Washington DC Union Station Lighting Upgrade Plan will not only enhance the issue's functionality and safety, but also demonstrate leadership and sustainable urban development. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Meyer. Are there any questions from commissioners for this witness? Seeing none, Mr. Meyer, thank you for taking the time to present to the commission today. That concludes the public testimony portion of this agenda item. Is there a motion to approve comments on the concept plan for the Union Station lighting upgrades?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll now open it to the commission for discussion, and I'll start deliberations with Commissioner Cash.
No questions. Thanks so much for the presentation and for answering my question earlier.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson? Commissioner Giacchetti? Not here. Sorry. Commissioner Kozart? Who is here?
Appreciate your work on this important project and appreciate, Mr. Carr, you being here and the focus on safety. Know, over the years, you've worked to make that a hallmark of the work at Union Station, so appreciate that. No other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Schaefer's not with us. Commissioner Stidham?
Thank you very much for the presentation and for the project. You know, you forget how great you can accent the architecture. And looking at the existing versus what is proposed, the new lighting will be really not only improvement for safety, but also it will highlight just the beautiful architecture of this particular structure and really show people how dramatic this building is. So I commend you on the work you're doing, and I look forward to more information.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll note for the record that Commissioner Argo has now joined us. Welcome, Commissioner Argo. You get one tardy, but not against you. Do you have any comments on the submission?
No. I have a comment on what it's like to try to get from Northwest DC. What one would, a logical and sane person would assume is a reasonable amount of time. So I apologize for my tardy.
I'll note for the record that the construction on Pennsylvania Avenue in Northwest DC was not cleared by this commission because it does not involve key equities under the National Capitol Planning Act. But we welcome you as always, and it's great to have you here. Vice Chair Levinbach, do you have any comments on this submission?
Yeah, I would just say that this is a heavily used location, and I was a heavy user, at least at one point, of Union Station. And I just want to emphasize the public safety aspects, and I appreciate everything you're doing.
Commissioner Blair has not joined us, so Commissioner Tunstall-Williams?
Thank you for the presentation and the project. It's such a gorgeous building, and it is very, it's in shadow all the time, and you don't really realize that because we all know it's beautiful. And so looking at the potential with these renderings is really inspiring, not only from the safety perspective, but also the beautification efforts that are going on in the district. And I think that you're sort of moving in the, leading the charge for federal structures. So we commend you, and I look forward to seeing it develop.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dixon?
Mr. Chairman, I think we all have been to the facility and realized how dark and dismal it can be right now. So this is great. I'm very happy about it. And I think the whole presentations have been very enlightening.
That was good. I think in some respects, it's quite timely to be bringing this before the commission in the dead of winter as opposed to in the summer, when the lighting issues are not quite as profound. Speaking for myself, I'll just say that I'm a huge fan of beautiful train stations. And I think the early 1900s were a time when the construction of architecturally magnificent train stations was commonplace in my home city of St. Louis, obviously, New York, DC, really all over the country. Union Station is an incredible architectural treasure for the Washington DC area. I think one of the greatest architectural catastrophes in contrast was the demolition of the old Penn Station in New York to make room for Madison Square Garden. Just immensely regrettable and just a terrible, terrible decision from an urban planning perspective. Union Station, as was noted by the presentations we've heard today, is the first impression that many visitors to the Capitol have. And it is very dark. I think this is an incredible plan. I think it's a much-needed plan. I think the public safety ramifications of it alone are quite significant and would justify this project. But I also think it's just, it's really amazing to see how beautiful and illuminated Union Station could be based on the renderings today. And I speak for myself, and based on what we've heard, I think most of the commission, when I say that I'm really excited to see how this project develops, we're excited to have you all back, hopefully next month, and we'll take things from there. But thank you for your time today, and thank you, obviously, to NCPC staff for their traditional care and attention to this matter and for the presentation today.
Thank you very much.
With that, if there are no further questions or comments, can the secretary please confirm the motion and second and take the vote by roll call?
Yes, the motion was made by Commissioner Dixon and seconded by Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Levinbach?
Yes.
Chairman Scharf?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
That motion passed.
Unanimously. Thank you, Madam Secretary. If there's nothing further on this point, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6B, which is a request to approve comments on site selection for the Women's Suffrage National Monument. I think we have Laura Shipman. Hey, Laura. Sorry.
Hello. Great. Good afternoon, Chairman Scharf and commissioners. The National Park Service, in collaboration with the Women's Suffrage National Monument Foundation, has submitted a site selection study for the Women's Suffrage National Monument. Before diving into an overview of the project, I will begin with background on the Commemorative Works Act. This federal law directs NCPC to review and approve the site and design for commemorative works located on federal lands in the district or its environs. The intent of the act is to preserve the integrity of the Lanfont and McMillan Plans. Originally passed in 1986, the law has been amended several times, including in 2003, when Congress established the reserve, an area on the National Mall where no new memorials are permitted shown on this map in orange. The decision criteria outlined in the Commemorative Works Act for site and design approval include locating the work in surroundings that are relevant to the subject and in a location that does not interfere with an existing work. The location should also protect open space and existing public use, as well as cultural and natural resources. After Congress authorizes a memorial on federal land and the president signs the bill into law, memorial sponsors must gain site and design approval from NCPC and the Commission of Fine Arts. The National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission provides advisory recommendations on the proposed sites under consideration prior to NCPC's formal review. Today, the commission is weighing the challenges and opportunities of each site. After these comments, the applicant will develop memorial designs with the preferred site or sites. In the future, the project will return to our commission for concept design review, then preliminary and final approval. And with that, I will move on to an overview of the monument submission and proposed recommendations. In December 2020, Public Law 116217 authorized the establishment of a commemorative work to commemorate the women's suffrage movement and the passage of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. On January 4, 2025, the Women's Suffrage National Monument Location Act authorized the monument to be located on the National Mall within the reserve that I showed on the previous slide. The applicant team is seeking a site that will accommodate a landscape design that will be integrated into the monumental core and located in relationship to memorials that highlight the nation's founding, constitutional history, and democratic ideals. According to the applicant, the site should be large enough to effectively accommodate the high number of visitors expected within a 20-minute walk of a metro rail station, require minimal new infrastructure, and the site should be in proximity to visitor facilities such as restrooms and food service. Once a preferred site has been selected, the foundation plans to hold a design competition to identify and select a monument design. The site selection study analyzed 14 potential monument sites for their suitability, with a particular geographic focus west of 14th Street, as the applicant considered the east portion of the mall to be primarily museum-focused and the west more appropriate for commemoration. Eight sites were then shortlisted for consideration when rated on suitability and then further narrowed down to four sites for evaluation. The final four sites for commission consideration are Constitution Gardens West, Constitution Gardens East, Hockey Fields East, and Washington Monument South. All four sites are located on the National Mall and are under the jurisdiction of the National Park Service. The first two sites are on Constitution Gardens, which is located along Constitution Avenue Northwest, with the Vietnam Veterans Memorial at its west end and the World War II Memorial and the Lincoln Memorial Reflecting Pool immediately adjacent to the south. Despite being located among several prominent commemorative works, Constitution Gardens does not receive the significant foot traffic of many other locations on the National Mall. In March of 2024, the commission approved plans for the rehabilitation of the Constitution Gardens Lake area. The project aims to improve the condition of the lake and create inviting spaces for the public to attract more visitors while respecting the original design. In terms of site context, the Constitution Gardens West site is less than a mile walk from the nearest metro rail station and also has opportunities for pickup and drop off along Constitution Avenue. This site has the strongest thematic nexus of the final four sites studied by locating a monument commemorating the 19th Amendment on Constitution Gardens, a living legacy to the constitutions and founding of the republic. The site provides additional thematic connections to the 56 signers of the Declaration of Independence Memorial and Vietnam Women's Memorial and a visual connection to the Washington Monument. These are existing condition photos of the site, which is also symbolically located at the intersection of Constitution Avenue and 19th Street Northwest, referencing the 19th Amendment. The potential design approach is to create a C-shaped area along the west side of the existing lake that is approximately two acres, with three small nodes ranging from .2 to .25 acres. A monument on the site would complement the vision for Constitution Gardens, included in the 2010 National Mall Plan and Constitution Gardens Rehabilitation Project by attracting additional visitors to this destination on the National Mall. A monument on the west side of the Constitution Gardens Lake would also have minimal impact on the approved rehabilitation project. This portion of the project area is adaptable as it was planned for passive uses, including upgrades to the lake path, planting areas, and then new seeding. The Constitution Gardens West site provides the clearest opportunity to integrate a commemorative work into the existing open space while enhancing the character of its surrounding context. And the site is most suitable to fulfill the applicant's site selection criteria. As such, staff supports advancing Constitution Gardens West for further evaluation and supports further exploration of the nodal landscape design approach, which has potential to align well with the naturalistic landscape setting of Constitution Gardens. As the design is developed, staff recommends close coordination with NPS and the Trust for the National Mall to ensure the design integrates into the rehabilitation plans for the lake area landscape previously approved by the commission. Moving on to the Constitution Gardens East, this site has similar thematic links as the Constitution Gardens West site and offers a flat and open site to accommodate the monument program. Here are existing views of the site, currently is used for permitted activities and events, though the terraces are in need of repair. The potential design approach on this site would include a two-acre buffer with a single focal area at the top of the lake terraces. This sighting overlaps with the planned improvements to the east portion of the lake, which include an updated event plaza and terraces, and is also proposed for a future visitor pavilion in the next phase of the Constitution Gardens Rehabilitation. While the thematic nexus is similar to Constitution Gardens West, staff recommends the east site be dismissed from further consideration due to conflicts with the approved plans for event programming and visitor spaces. Next, we will take a look at the Hockey Fields East site. The John F. Kennedy Hockey Fields are located just south of the Lincoln Memorial Reflecting Pool. The site is currently used for a variety of recreational purposes as one of the few open spaces of significant size in this part of the National Mall. The site area is approximately two acres with a .5 acre focal area. While the site offers an open and expansive space for memorial design with clear visibility of the Washington Monument, staff recommends the Hockey Fields East site be dismissed from further consideration to maintain current recreational uses. The Washington Monument South site is also located on the edge of the Washington Monument grounds. Yes, okay. The Washington Monument South site is located on the edge of the Washington Monument grounds and is within a .5 mile walk from the Smithsonian Metro Rail Station. Pickup and drop-off areas are more limited at this site. The site is also in close proximity to the Smithsonian Institution's preferred location for the future American Women's History Museum at 14th and Independence. Here are existing photos of the site, which is an unprogrammed area located along a grove of trees just north of the Survey Lodge, which serves as as an NPS ranger station. The site also is adjacent to the proposed Sylvan Theater Improvement Area outlined in red, which will include an amphitheater and visitor amenities. The Washington Monument South site area is approximately 1.8 acres, tucked next to the Grove of Trees on the southwest corner of the grounds with a .5 acre focal area oriented towards the Washington Monument. While the overall site area is approximately the same, the site's dimensions are less constrained than the Constitution Gardens West site, allowing for greater design flexibility. However, the proposed monument may be incompatible with open turf lawn setting of the Washington Monument grounds. Additionally, plans for the adjacent Sylvan Theater project have not been finalized, leaving the compatibility with that design unknown. In summary, staff supports advancing Constitution Gardens West for further evaluation. If that site is deemed infeasible after initial design study, the applicant should consider further evaluation of the suitability of the Washington Monument South site for conceptual design. As mentioned previously, the foundation plans to hold a design competition to identify and select a monument design. Staff encourages the applicant to ensure the competition brief emphasizes the design will undergo iterative review by NCPC and other agencies, and the sponsor may consider consultation with NCPC and other stakeholders during the development of the competition brief and design finalist selection. The commission's recommendations for the previous reviewed Constitution Gardens Rehabilitation Project should also provide guidance for design elements within the monument site. Staff recommends the applicant consider shade and seating areas for visitor comfort and integrate universal design principles into the site design. The monument's commemorative elements should be limited in height to maintain existing few sheds and prevent encroachment into the setting of surrounding memorials. Additionally, staff recommends the sponsor consider including spaces for children in the design to accommodate families and school groups visiting the National Mall, particularly if Constitution Gardens West is advanced. And finally, as the landscape plans are developed, the applicant should consider policy guidance in the Comprehensive Plan Federal Environment Element regarding tree removal, tree replacement, and the selection of plants that support pollinators where appropriate. In closing, staff recommends the commission approve the comments on the site selection study for the Women's Suffrage National Monument highlighted throughout my presentation and listed on the following slides. That concludes my presentation. And we will now have remarks from Kevin Grease, NPS Superintendent of the National Mall and Memorial Parks, and then from Anna Layman, President and CEO of the Women's Suffrage National Monument Foundation, the project sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Kevin, would you like to proceed?
Yes, hello. My name is Kevin Grease and I have the honor of being the superintendent of the National Mall and of course of the Reserve, the home of the most valued members of our monument family. I just want to say thank you very much. It's an honor to be addressing the commission today. And we are completely excited, over the top, to welcome another member to the Reserve. We look at the Reserve as being the most hallowed ground and a valuable monument memorial like this is fantastic. We've been following this development of this activity for a while. We've been working with the foundation and we just believe that, you know, it's right time, right everything, and then we're just excited. As we look at site selections, as you consider site selections, we support a very deliberative site selection process as you're going through because as I said before, here within the NPS, the mall is a very hollowed ground. To welcome a member to that is a significant event, not to be taken lightly. I appreciate the rigor of your process and the discussion that's taken us up to here right now. We look forward to partnering with the foundation as we go forward and seeing this all the way to conclusion and look forward to a permanent, forever welcoming to our, again, what we call the Reserve family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. And we also have Anna Layman. Anna, would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Ms. Grease. Thank you so much for having us here today, Chairman Scharf and fellow commissioners. My name is Anna Layman and I am the President and CEO of the Women's Suffrage National Monument Foundation. We could not be more grateful for this opportunity to discuss the Women's Suffrage National Monument's multi-year site study process and to share with you why we believe Constitution Gardens is the most fitting location for this monument. The path to establishing the Women's Suffrage National Monument has been uniquely unifying. It's been bipartisan, bicameral, and spanning multiple administrations. And as a symbol of that unity and bipartisanship, we are deeply honored to be chaired by all five living First Ladies, the only organization in the United States to be able to claim that truly great honor. Our goal is to build a monument that weaves the great women of American history into the stories told on the National Mall and inspires future generations in the continued pursuit of a more perfect union. When we began the site study, we found that the area to the west of 14th Street, which is bookended by the Washington Monument to the east and the Lincoln Memorial to the west, is most fitting because this area forms the historic commemorative core of Washington. A key guiding principle of our work was to place this memorial where it could be integrated with and be in conversation with the great monuments honoring the founding ideals of our nation. Constitution Gardens resonated as the most ideal and fitting site due to its clear logistical and historical merits and the opportunity the area provides to honor our founding mothers alongside our founding fathers. Constitution Gardens, as I'm sure many of you know, was born out of President Nixon's plan to create a park on the National Mall to celebrate America's bicentennial in 1976. While it encompasses more than 50 acres of the National Mall, Constitution Gardens currently features one single but impactful commemorative work, the memorial dedicated to the 56 signers of the Declaration of Independence, placed there to honor America's 200th anniversary. Ten years after the bicentennial in 1986, President Reagan officially renamed the space Constitution Gardens. He proclaimed this area of the National Mall to be a quote, "living legacy tribute to the Constitution, celebrating the ideals of freedom, justice, and liberty for all." This is the enduring spirit that connects our project to that land. Looking to the present and future of Constitution Gardens, we are so gratified to share that the Trust for the National Mall has an approved plan, as Laura so eloquently mentioned, to revitalize the grounds and lake area of Constitution Gardens to now honor America's 250th anniversary. The Trust for the National Mall is fully supportive of placing our monument along the western side of the lake as a compliment to their Constitution Gardens Rehabilitation Plan, particularly because this monument program includes a landscaped garden that provides shade, flowers, seating, and gathering space for children, families, and multigenerational groups. We would be honored to join the Trust for the National Mall in creating a meaningful and exciting new destination in our nation's capital for the American people. Now, as we approach America's 250th anniversary, we would be grateful for the opportunity to place this monument in Constitution Gardens and to build on that legacy that began there in that space during America's bicentennial. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to tell a richer story of our founding, one that celebrates our four mothers who expanded and protected American democracy. And while I would never dare speak for a member of Congress, as one of our congressional champions said, "Where better to place a memorial to the 19th Amendment to the Constitution than at the literal intersection of 19th Street and Constitution Avenue?" It is truly an honor to be here with you today to discuss this project. You all are the caretakers of this great and storied city. And to work alongside you to honor women's contributions to American democracy on the National Mall is our privilege. On behalf of the Women's Suffrage National Monument Foundation, thank you for your time, for your expertise, and for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Layman. Do any commissioners have any questions for the three presenters we've heard from today, from Laura, the commissioner, Ms. Layman? Yes, ma'am.
So my question, I'm not sure if Mr. Grease or maybe it's Commissioner Stidham. I'm curious about the Constitution East Side, the plans for those, what kind of reminding me, what are those plans and kind of how close are they to fruition, I guess is the question, but happy for all that have an answer to answer.
Sure, I think I can chime into that. So originally, there was to be a pavilion there with a restaurant or some sort of food service. And in the recent plan that was approved by NCPC, that has been scaled back to more of an event space. There was an anticipation that the trust would be able to move forward with this project in time for the 250th anniversary, but that is not looking like the case. So we're reevaluating what that schedule might look like. But as you can see, this monument fits in very beautifully to the original design that the trust came up with and it really will be seamless, yet an enhancement to the landscape that I think will only enrich the entire landscape. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I'm not sure who can answer, but are they still going to put fish in the water?
So I can probably help with that question.
I certainly can't.
Uh, we do.
Supposed to be fishing allowed in this.
Need to stop. Yes, we do continue to talk. We have fishing days and other sorts of fishing days. And it is my understanding that the pool has a lot of issues right now and this project will resolve all of those issues so that it will be a more habitable space for fish and other biota. So it's more of a living system. Right now, it is is not so much, but the improvements will really improve that. But regardless of when this improvement come, fish will continue.
Yeah, I'm not a big fisherman, but I knew I asked this many some time ago. And they were going to stock it for people to go and fish. And I thought the ladies should know that this could be coming, you know, someplace where folk can actually find some food too that they may be able to work with. It's a good thing, I think. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Having resolved the concern with potential impact on this vital fishery, are there any other questions for the the presenters? I have one question. I noticed that this site plan is obviously, it's sort of trinodal or it's multi-nodal. The other sites that were under consideration, at least based on the materials I reviewed, seem to focus around a single node. Is that a concern for your group? Is that is that considered desirable? How did that play into considerations around site selection?
That's a great question. Thank you. So it's not only is it not a concern, it is our strong preference.
Okay.
So for, I'm sure all of you know this, but the story of women's fight for the vote is a long 72-year journey that started in 1848 and concluded with the ratification of the 19th Amendment in 1920. And this design approach and this ability to be able to weave a story along a path is perfectly fitting of the story that we will be telling and interpreting for the monument. And so for us, this shape and this path and the beauty of being able to do that over a linear space as opposed to, you know, a more traditional square rectangular space will be a strength for us in the story that we're telling.
So you're starting in 1848? You won't include Mary Wallstone Craft or there are our founders' views on women's suffrage?
Well, what a, I love that question. I could talk about this all day. You know, one of our favorite parts of the story and one of the reasons that Constitution Gardens is so important for us is, of course, you can date this story back to 1776 or before if you would like to, but we love to talk about Abigail Adams writing a letter to her husband, John Adams, in March of 1776, saying, hey, as you are writing the Constitution, remember the ladies, right? So she wrote that. We still have that letter today. And of course, in Constitution Gardens, you have the Signers Island, which features John Adams and the Declaration of Independence. And so being able to tell this story here allows
And so being able to tell this story here allows us to tell that founding history. So, yeah.
Great. Are there any other questions for our presenters? We do have, hearing none. Thank you all very much. That was extremely enlightening. And I appreciate your attention or your attention to detail here. We do have one member of the public who's registered to testify publicly. I'm going to butcher the pronunciation of your name, sir, but Bernard Byrne. Is that correct, Byrne? Mr. Byrne, you have three minutes if you're with us.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you, sir.
Okay, thank you. You did get my name right.
Okay, that's good to hear.
The sponsor wants to construct this monument, the Constitution West Gardens West Site. This site is located on an imaginary line that extends southward from 19th Street, which reaches Constitution Avenue. The Constitution, the Constitution's 19th Amendment granted suffrage to women. That is the primary reason the applicant prefers this site. They gave a lot of other reasons, but that is the main reason. And you have to remember that. In 2024, you approved the final site development plans for the Constitution Garden Rehabilitation Phase Two Project, which the National Park Service will construct. Now, this is important here. The project site shows a meadow with two trees, two pollinator collared gardens, and a wetland planting via filtration area near the west end of Constitution Gardens Lake. The suffrage monument would construct strictly these plans rather than enhance them. The applicant will most likely want to construct this monument by adding a structure or other hardscape that would add an impermeable surface to the area. This will disrupt the approved natural area. You should therefore not recommend this site. Visitors will neither know nor care that the monument is located on an imaginary line that extends southward from 19th Street. Further, the applicant can construct this monument anywhere along Constitution Avenue rather than building it a distance from the avenue. If Constitution is important, put it anywhere along Constitution Avenue. None of the sites that the sponsor evaluates are as appropriate for this memorial as the sites that the sponsor does evaluate. That is Union Square, which is in front of the Capitol at the eastern end of the National Mall. It is in the reserve. A monument commemorating women's suffrage could not have a better location than one in front of the building in which the nation's elected legislatures meet. I mean, this is an important thing, and I don't know why they didn't consider it, except they said it's not a suitable site or whatever. The eastern portion of Union Square is 11 acres, contains a large pool. Its western portion contains a lawn with occasional trees and paths. The architect of the Capitol has jurisdiction over its property. The site's proximity to the Capitol and its elected legislators make it an ideal location for a monument commemorating women's suffrage. Please therefore ask the applicant to work with the architect of the Capitol to evaluate the suitability of Union Square for a proposed monument rather than to favor the Constitution Gardens West Site. This is an important thing. They should have really considered that more important. It is right next to where the legislature meets, where the Capitol is, and you could not find a better place than this. It's certainly better than the Constitution Gardens Site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. As always, we appreciate your passion for the issues that come before this commission and your comment by the commissioners here. Are there any questions for Mr. Byrne before we proceed? Yes, sir.
Mr. Burns suggested that he had some insights to what they're going to put on this space if they get it. And I would like him to comment on it.
More how he knows that, that's where they will go in terms of the impact on the space.
Mr. Byrne, are you still with us?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Can you repeat the question exactly, what you said?
You said that you were concerned about the nature of the memorial. It would impact the space adversely. I want to know, what were you, do you know what they're going to do on the space? And what is that, what is the impact you perceive?
Well, of course, I don't know, but they didn't say it. And they were designers. However, it seems it was likely that they'll put a statue, some sort of concrete structure there to attract attention to it. And that will impact the natural area, which is now planned for it. Now, they could answer this better. I'm sure they don't have any immediate plans now. But I can't imagine them putting something that doesn't have some concrete built, a statue or a picture of something. But there would be something concrete they're adding, an impermeable surface that would basically not be compatible with this. Now, they tend to gloss over this. I can't say what it is because I haven't decided yet. But that's what I know. I just can't imagine them building something without adding some concrete thing there, some hardscape. You have to ask them what they think about this. That's really a question for them to answer.
Mr. Chairman, I would just suggest that these are, as we know, clever ladies. So they probably will think this through and do something that makes sense. Maybe will satisfy your concerns, maybe, maybe not. But I'm particularly excited about them having the opportunity to exercise their judgment here, which is sort of consistent with their memorial, their judgment being exercised. I also want to go back, I have to go back to this fishing thing. I'm around some grandchildren, and they love to go fishing at these kind of ponds. So I think it's going to be, I didn't ask that just because I go, I'm not a fisherman. But these kids at five and six, they love to go. And boy, they can be right next to this memorial and be indoctrinated and get the history right there while they're catching fish and throwing them back in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Commissioner, I would like nothing more than once this memorial is completed, I'll grab my nephews, you can grab your grandkids, and we can have a really nice day fishing and also learn about the great struggle for women's suffrage. So I share your sentiment. Mr. Byrne, again, thank you for testifying today. If there are no other questions for Mr. Byrne, are there any from other commissioners present? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor to approve comments on site selection for the Women's Suffrage National Monument?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion on the floor and a second, I'll now open it to the commission for discussion. And we'll start on this one with Commissioner Tunstall-Williams.
Surprise, I thought you'd start with Commissioner Stidham. Well, this has been a long process with you. I feel like we've been on this ride together. And it's, again, as I've said every time, I think a very worthy memorial to be within the reserve. And I really would like to commend you all on the thoughtfulness and thoroughness of your search. You were open to kind of everything we threw at you. You said, okay, well, let's look at it and without a closed mind. And so I appreciate that, and I anticipate that the same will happen as we evolve the design. And I'm really excited to see it move forward. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dixon, we've heard your views on the fishing impact of this monumental site. Do you have any other comments for the record?
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Henderson. Nothing. Commissioner Giacchetti, I don't believe is with us. Commissioner Kozart? Oh, oh, sorry. I apologize. Yeah. I read my list wrong. I apologize, Commissioner Cash.
Well, I mean, I heard Abigail Adams, and I thought of the letters about the construction on the White House. That's another timely. And also, not to mention the fish that eat the pollinators that are out there in the water. I mean, it's crazy. I just do want to say, I think this is a great location for this monument, just beyond the 19th and Constitution. I think this has been a space that not enough people go over there, especially to the west side of Constitution Gardens, if we haven't been there. As someone who's a big bus advocate and who rides the buses in DC all the time, I would say proximity to a metro station isn't always the most important thing. I mean, there's other ways to get over there and see all the other great stuff that's on the west side, even around the monumental core. I also think that we need to play up, it was mentioned a couple of times in the EDR, but the location next to or in proximity to the Vietnam Women's Memorial, there's future Rosie the Riveter Memorial that's contemplated, that I'm sure will go over somewhere near World War II. So it's kind of like we have a whole little core of women's monuments that are kind of like getting the center of all these war monuments, and hopefully will push their way out someday and break through. But I think it's a great location for a variety of reasons. So I just wanted to commend all the work that's been done on here and hope that this is the selection that's made. And I think it's a great circuitous route. It also reminded me of the FDR Memorial with the circuitous route around there with Eleanor there. So I think it's just a great selection to roll.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Now proceeding to Commissioner Kozart.
Really want to thank staff for the great presentation. I learned a lot and associate myself with the comments of Commissioner Cash.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. Commissioner Schaefer's not with us. Commissioner Stidham.
Thank you very much for the presentation. You hit a lot of the points that I was going to drive home that I guess I don't need to, between the other comments that are made here today and the great presentation you did driving through. You know, the park service has a unique role in the development of memorials. And we are very privileged to be part of that process and to help working with very closely with sponsors to help them identify the sites, move through design, and then through to deconstruction. So it's a long process, and we spend a lot of time together. And I have to say that this site, Constitution Gardens West, not only does it have so much thematic nexus between direct conversations with the 56 signers memorial, the Vietnam Women's Memorial, the address alone of 19th and Constitution just drives that home. But also the program that's anticipated and how it will fit into this landscape, which this is not the easiest site. If you think about the fact that the Vietnam Memorial is to the west and you're in the middle of all of these other war-type memorials, carving your way here is not the easiest site, but this foundation doesn't take the easy route. They are sure to go where they need to be, and I believe this is exactly where they need to be. So we look forward to additional work with the commission, all of the commissions, and especially the foundation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Argo.
To have this to have this recognition for such a significant point in our history, not just for women, but for everybody, is just magnificent. You know, and that we've gotten to this point. Been a long time. So wonderful. I'm so glad, and thanks for all your work.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chairman Levinbach?
It's more of a comment for Commissioner Dixon. So I am trained as a marine ecologist. I don't think we're going to get salmon in the lake.
Well, you know, I have pictures of them throwing them back in my.
I do support the fishing, so. But anyway, I just want to thank staff for a great presentation and the foundation for all your efforts.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Yes, sir.
I want to pick up on what Commissioner Cash said, which is kind of very important to me. Seeing this as a push against maybe all the war in that area. I have, though I'm a retired 06 full bird colonel in the Army, I have been voting on a consistent basis on this commission against any memorial dealing with war. Not because I'm against that, some of the recognition, but because I think we study war too much and we need to be looking at more things like this particular memorial. And also, I'm sorry that this action didn't take sooner by our country. We may have been in a very different place. So anyhow, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would recommend to the applicant, in light of Commissioner Dixon's comments, that you not highlight Sojourner Truth's vital role in recruiting soldiers for the Union War effort during the Civil War. I'll just say that this is an exciting project. I mean, women's suffrage was a tremendous constitutional achievement. The history is fascinating. Really going back to the founding era, when some of our founders really were devotees of Mary Wallstone Craft and that sort of proto-feminism movement, and really continuing through Seneca Falls and Susan B. Anthony and Sojourner Truth. It's a fascinating history that hopefully now that we have or will shortly have a site selected for it will be properly represented among the various monuments in our nation's capital here. I'd like to thank staff as always for their extraordinary diligence and care in proceeding through this process. I actually, I was curious about the multinodal versus more singular, more traditional monumental site. But given that that's what the applicant wants, I think Constitution Gardens West, really that area is dramatically underutilized, and hopefully it will now find a great utility. Are there any further comments or questions? Or hearing none, can the secretary please confirm the motion and second and take the vote by roll call?
Yes, the motion was made by Commissioner Stidham and seconded by Commissioner Tunstall-Williams. Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Levinbach?
Yes.
Chairman Sharpe?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Motion is carried unanimously. And with that, we will move on to Agenda Item 6C, which is a request to approve preliminary site development plans for the Fallen Journalists Memorial. And we have Melissa Lynn Shaw here with us. Do we also have anybody from the applicant with us, or is it just you, Melissa?
We will, yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, I'll go ahead.
Oh, I see here. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chairman Sharpe and Commissioners. The National Park Service, in collaboration with the Fallen Journalists Memorial Foundation, has submitted a preliminary site development plan for the Fallen Journalists Memorial for the commission to review and comment. Let me quickly refresh what Laura stated earlier about the Commemorative Works Act, or CWA. This federal law directs NCPC to review and approve the site and design for commemorative works located on federal lands in Washington DC or its environs. The map here shows the reserve in orange as well as Area 1 in yellow. Area 1 is reserved for memorials deemed to be of preeminent historical and last significance, and just a reminder of the required criteria outlined in the CWA for site and design approval. This includes locating the work in surroundings that are relevant to the subject and in a location that does not interfere with an existing work. The graphic shown gives a quick overview of the site selection and design review process. In 2020, under Public Law 116253, Congress authorized the Fallen Journalists Memorial Foundation to build a commemorative work in Washington DC. Public Law 117328 allows this memorial to be located in Area 1 that I showed on the previous slide. In April 2023, the commission supported advancing two sites, one of them being the Maryland Avenue Site. In October 2024, the commission approved comments supporting the design approach and found the design must balance memorial purpose, materiality, and functionality while considering the site context and visitor experience. For the Fallen Journalists Memorial, we are at the preliminary review step shown in the black box. At preliminary review, our commission often provides comments, requests, or recommendations to be addressed in the final review. At this stage, the commission gives preliminary approval of the preferred site and proposed design. During preliminary review, the commission focuses the review on questions and issues such as how does the preferred site and design comply with the decision criteria of the CWA? How will the project affect views and view sheds? What is the landscaping design strategy? How will visitors access the site? And does the program need to change for the design to work? The program of the memorial is to advance the goals of commemoration, education, and inspiration. The foundation envisions that the memorial will include an outdoor site with a commemorative feature as well as benches and interpretive signage. Here is the site location with context of the National Mall and the Capitol. The site is a triangular park along Independence Avenue, Maryland Avenue, and Third Street Southwest. The commission has been supportive of using underutilized triangular sites within Washington for memorials. The site is a modest at approximately 0.3 acres. Here are photos of the existing conditions of the site from various viewpoints. The memorial design consists of a hardscape stone plaza overlaid with a grove of trees that sidestep the array of cast glass elements with aggregate to form the memorial's circular remembrance hall at the heart of the site. The applicant has worked over the last year, including two working sessions with stakeholders to refine the design to address the comments previously made by the commission related to site design, visitor access and circulation, visitor comfort, view sheds, lighting, streetscape design, and material use and durability. For the purposes of the analysis that follows, staff has focused on those aspects of the proposed design that have substantially changed since the previous commission review and organize them under the following topics: visitor experience, remembrance hall, lighting, and material use and durability. Before we go into visitor experience, I wanted to share some cast glass examples. The examples are with the glass that the applicant will be using. And there's also a sample of the glass in front of you on display. First, I'll talk about the visitor experience of the memorial. Visitors would access the memorial from Maryland Avenue, Independence Avenue, and Third Street Southwest. The pink highlights the accessible routes in and around the memorial. The revised memorial design includes an addition of three metal pylons at the three corners of the triangular site to assist with wayfinding of the memorial. Here's a rendering of one of the three pylons, and staff supports the addition of these. The applicant also showed two layouts for temporary events in response to previous feedback. Staff supports these layouts. The memorial design includes granite paving now varied between the memorial site and the right-of-way. The sidewalks around the perimeter of the site are now uniformly sized and have granite seating. The sidewalks around the perimeter of the site are now uniformly sized and have granite seating along the perimeter. These changes will all help support visitor use and movement as shown in the renderings on the screen. Staff support the expansion of the sidewalk widths to fifteen feet around the entire perimeter of the memorial site and the addition of the granite seating and varied granite paving around the perimeter of the site to help define circulation. The memorial design continues to include a series of transparent solid glass elements placed across the site that generally define circulation paths and gathering spaces. Bench height glass elements are arranged to create designated paths for visitors to enter the remembrance hall that are ADA compliant. Multiple glass elements are stacked together to create the over nine foot tall walls of the remembrance hall. While the arrangement of the blocks are ADA compliant, they still seem scattered in a seemingly random manner, which could still be a challenge for various abilities to safely navigate throughout the memorial. The height and width may also seem uncomfortable for visitors while contemplating in the memorial, even if ADA compliant. Staff requests continue refinement of the arrangement of scattered glass elements within the site to help improve access and circulation. At the October, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, the Commission previously requested the applicant work with NCPC and the Monumental Corps interagency working with to evaluate how the proposed memorial design can align with the Monumental Corps streetscape guidelines and improve the pedestrian experience along Independence Avenue. In response, the applicant has added two rows of street trees along Independence Avenue and selected two cultivars of honey locusts as the tree, which is an approved tree in the guidelines. The applicant did a shade study to show how much shade the trees will bring in all four seasons. Given the need still for more shade, staff recommends the applicant evaluate if more trees or other landscaping can still be added. Staff requests the applicant provide as part of the next mission, further information clearly stating how the temporary event will happen on different services without impacting the design landscape in the median of Maryland Avenue as shown on the screen. Next, I will discuss Remembrance Hall. The site again is located along Maryland Avenue Southwest, which is identified as a preeminent view corridor with a linear view from the US Capitol to the tidal basin. Remembrance Hall is composed of a series of blocks that together create a more formal gathering space. A polished glass lens is located at the center of the hall. This is the view from the southern side of the glass lens. Here is the view from the north side of the hall. And here is the view when you enter from the west side approaching the glass lens. In response to previous comments, the applicant has added another entry into the hall. Staff finds this beneficial for visitor access and supports the proposed addition of a second entryway. Regarding internal views, staff notes that the central remembrance hall is intended to bright, provide a view towards the US Capitol dome. The new entry point as viewed from the center of the hall is slightly, slightly offset from the view to the Capitol. As such, it may be a missed opportunity to create a more direct visual relationship to the dome. Staff recommends the applicant consider moving the east entryway to align with the view of the US Capitol from, as viewed from the central lens element. Staff requests the applicant to continue to evaluate the overall height of the remembrance hall to ensure that views the US Capitol dome are appropriately framed once the entryway is aligned. Within Remembrance Hall is a circular glass lens and in the center holds the text of the First Amendment to the US Constitution. According to the submission, the lens is about eighteen inches tall. Staff finds the lens of the remembrance hall has a larger lip, is higher off the ground and requests the applicant to explore lens design that, uh, does not create a potential hazard for visitors. And now I'll move into the lighting. The submission included an updated lighting study of the site focusing on the impacts to the hierarchy of the US Capitol and surrounding museums. Overall, the proposed lighting approach appears respectful of this hierarchy and staff recommends the applicant continue to refine the study as design changes are made to ensure the proposed lighting remain appropriate with the hierarchy of surrounding buildings, memorials and mon, uh, museums. Lastly, I will talk about material use and durability. The applicant selected glass elements as the primary commemorative material as it engages with themes of transparency, clarity and light. Each glass element will be unique and slightly different to represent the unique personal story of each remembered. The glass was previously the same size and will now become slightly more narrow as you move up the wall. As the memorial design further develops, additional details and evaluation will be necessary regarding several issues around safety and cleanliness of the memorial. As such, staff requests the applicant provide as part of the next submission, further information on the durability of the glass elements and how they will be maintained and cleaned. The applicant explored several options for skateboarder deterrence. These included primarily raised elements applied to the glass blocks. Staff finds the option for the skateboarding deterrence will take away from the design and comfort for visitors. Therefore, staff requests the applicant to provide additional alternatives to deter skateboarding on the memorial. Additional alternatives could include decorative fittings that speak to the theme of the memorial. And with that, I will go into the executive director's recommendation. I will not read word for word, but would like to highlight a few. The sporting of the expansion of the sidewalk widths to fifteen feet around the entire perimeter of the memorial site, supporting the additional, uh, granite seating and varied granite paving, supporting the proposed addition of a second entryway into Remembrance Hall, recommending that the applicant consider moving the east entryway to align with the view of the US Capitol, requests the applicant to continue to evaluate the overall height of Remembrance Hall. And the applicant is currently working with the District Department of Transportation on transferring portions of the right of way to MPS in order to implement the sidewalk design and allow for maintenance for the memorials, streetscape elements. Therefore, staff recommends the applicant continue to work with the District Department of Transportation regarding any transfers of jurisdictions that will be needed for the memorial. The Commission will review any future transfer of jurisdiction. Staff appreciates this submission and looks forward to continue working with the applicant. With that, I'm done with my presentation and can't answer any questions. And we have, um, Kevin Grease, Superintendent of the National Mall Memorial Parks, who would like to give a few words on behalf of MPS as well as Barbara Cochran with the Fallen Journalists Memorial Foundation and John Ronan with the design team.
Thank you, Melissa. Mister Superintendent, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
Would you like to proceed, sir?
Yes, of course. So hello again, and I, you know, I'm getting really excited. There's two, two, two items up on the agenda. This is awesome. Uh, and by the way, I'll look into the fish. So the Fallen Journalists Memorial is, we're very excited about this. We have, we don't have any concerns, but we're looking at the maintenance and care. So we're looking forward to the innovative cast glass design is something that we don't currently have in other places on the mall. So we're looking at how we're gonna do our, you know, forever maintenance and, and sustainability and cleaning, right? Which is always a key thing because so we're working with the foundation so we can perhaps, uh, build a larger endowment or a special fund, um, for the care and maintenance as we just, as we move forward and, and take care of it. We don't feel that's a barrier. We just feel that it's something that we have to be agile as a park service here in the, as a, as the mall and just learn a new way and just adapt to it. So we're excited about this and we look forward to this proceeding toward conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Superintendent. Um, Ms. Cochran? Oh, you're presenting together. Okay. Well, let's proceed on that basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mister Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm Barbara Cochran. I'm the President of the Fallen Journalists Memorial Foundation, which is, as you heard, the memorial sponsor. And I want to express our appreciation to, for the Commission's support in getting us this far and for uh, your many helpful comments and suggestions as we work to complete the, uh, the site plan for the memorial. This privately funded bipartisanly authorized memorial is at its core a celebration of the First Amendment. And, uh, and is, uh, focusing on freedom of the press and a commemoration of those who've died while bringing news and information to the public. The inscription of the First Amendment, which is at the core of the memorial, will allow visitors to reflect on the historic example America has set for the world. We're honored to have John Ronan as the artistic visionary for the memorial design and site plan. Out of more than fifty submissions from around the world, we selected John for his innovative artistic approach, his civic mindedness and his Midwestern sensibility, all of which are reflected in this design. And we're very happy that this design will contribute to a safer and more beautiful Washington. Your actions today are a critical step in implementing the vision that Congress and President Trump set in two thousand and twenty when they authorized this memorial and in keeping the project on schedule. With that, let me turn it over to John to add his perspective on the presentation. And we look forward to continuing to work with you and your staff to refine and improve the memorial site plan.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran, and welcome, Mister Ronan.
Thank you, Commissioners, and, uh, I'd like to thank everyone at the various agencies, uh, that have helped us uh, improve this design, uh, o- over the past years. So uh, I'm John Ronan. I'm founding principal of John Ronan Architects based in Chicago. I want the memorial to be an inspiring work of art that celebrates the First Amendment and honors those who have given their lives seeking to inform the American people. The memorial is dignified and timeless yet forward looking to reflect American values and optimism. I've chosen solid cast glass, a timeless material, denser and more long lasting than stone to express the enduring character of our institutions and to reference the ideals of transparency and clarity that people expect from those who dedicate their careers to reporting the news. The memorial is conceived as a journey of discovery that unfolds space by space like a story unfolds line by line, casting the visitor in the role of investigative reporter. The cast glass elements aggregate to form a pure circular rotunda at the heart of the site, a dignified space whose symmetry and form are inspired by classical antiquity. At the center of this rotunda is a glass lens inscribed with the text of the First Amendment. Looking downward to read its message, visitors see their own reflection, reinforcing the idea that each one of us has a role to play in preserving First Amendment freedoms and safeguarding our civic institutions. As night falls, the memorial begins to glow softly and the brightly lit Capitol dome comes into view above the rotunda's eastern rim, emphasizing the First Amendment as a beacon of freedom to the world and underscoring the dignity, vigor and stability of America's constitutional system. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, are there any questions, uh, from the Commission for, for any of our three presenters? Vice Chairman Levinbach?
Yeah, um, thank you for the presentation. So I'm, I'm interested in some of the staff comments around the maintenance of the, uh, of the site. I, I wanted to, there are a couple of different aspects that were emphasized. I know the, the materials and the glass was one of them. I want to talk a little about the trees and how, what, what's your estimate in terms of how many need to be replaced over time? Urban forestry is a little difficult. The way, uh, there were some pretty technical renderings in terms of the underground irrigation system. Honey locusts are durable, but they're, they're not self pruning, so they have to be pruned. The roots aren't interlocking. So there's a lot of aspects, just the trees alone, that would require some maintenance. And I'm interested in just in general, how you view the project.
Yeah, well, uh, let me start with the cleaning. So the cleaning, um, the, the cleaning is done with just the municipal water supply. So we have hose bibs around the site. And so the memorial will be naturally cleaned by rainwater, but can be periodically cleaned merely by hosing it. And then a more stubborn stain or a sticky stain, um, it is recommended, uh, that, uh, a soft mild detergent like a dish soap be used to remove that. So there's no special chemicals uh, that are required to clean it. It actually cleans, uh, much more easily than stone, for example. Um, on the trees, we, we've spent, uh, a, a great amount of research on trees. Uh, we wanted to conform with the, with the core of, uh, DC design uh, guidelines for trees in this area in the honey locust does that. We, we ended up on the honey locust uh, for a number of reasons. And, um, first, I, I would state that the, the honey locust is a, a very sturdy, uh, urban street tree. Uh, it's, it's, it's a very hardy tree that's used in, uh, urban environments and, and can take the, uh, the wear and tear, let's say. The most important aspect of it though is its canopy. So the honey locust has very small leaves and a very lacy canopy. So it's not a big, uh, full shade tree and we wanted, we need the light to come through the canopy to activate the glass, uh, because it creates, uh, part of, uh, the, the interest of the memorial is the cast glass itself, but even more than that is the effect of light as it passes through the glass and is projected onto the gray granite stone. And so the honey locust gives us a dappled light, uh, that we're looking for that can actually activate and, uh, activate the glass, um, as, as it's reflect, as it's reflected on the stone. The, uh, the way the trees are planted, uh, I mean, these trees are going to be babied. It's, it's, uh, they're, they're in, uh, uh, special tree pits with, uh, air irrigation and aeration and they will be, um, maintained to the highest standards. And so this isn't, um, it's, that are well above, let's say, the planting conditions of an average street tree in a city. And so, um, we think the combination of, of, of the kind of the qualities of the lacy uh, canopy, uh, that allows light through and its sturdiness and the way we're planting them will, will give us a very, uh, long lasting uh, tree canopy on the site. The last reason I would mention is that, uh, it's a large tree, grows to about seventy feet. Honey locust has a relatively, uh, narrow trunk diameter. And, uh, some of the larger shade trees grow to, uh, elms or, or maples. They have a very large trunk. They grow up to two or three feet in diameter and we feel that that would overpower or overwhelm the delicacy of the glass elements on site. Whereas a honey locust grows to maybe a ten, twelve inch, uh, mature diameter, which is much more in keeping uh, with the glass to complement the glass, but not overpower it.
I follow up?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so, um, and I, I'm, I think that.
Happy to add something, uh, on behalf of the foundation. We've agreed to a memorandum of intent with the, uh, to provide ongoing support to the National Park Service for the operation and maintenance of the memorial and to establish a fund to sustain long term ma, long term maintenance and repair services.
That's great. And I think that's really where my question is more than the, this type of tree that was selected, but when you think about, for example, all the fountains in DC that need repair and certainly we're administrations interested in repairing them. The, uh, that underground irrigation system looks pretty complex and in the fact that there's going to be a con, concrete or your stone over it, it just seems as though the, the maintenance in particular for this may be, um, require extra attention and the reserves necessary to maintain it. So it looks just as nice uh, in thirty years from now as it does on day one is something that requires, uh, some additional thought so that, yeah, the, the memorial, the trees can be maintained and replaced as needed.
So maybe I could jump in there. Um, uh, both the foundation and the National Park Service recognize that the uniqueness of this particular memorial will require additional maintenance. You know, sometimes above the level that we have to provide. So their agreement and working and develop an endowment to help with those maintenance needs whereas for, front and foremost in the discussions around the design. Recognizing those additional needs and our ability to keep it at its highest quality um, and performance, um, forever, right? This is going to be here forever and it will need to be, um, in its best form for that period. Uh, the tree pits are designed so that if we need to remove a tree, we're not taking out the entire memorial to do that. Um, so I think that we have thought through a lot of maybe what you're concerned about. Um, and happy to share more information if that helps.
I, I have a couple of questions born solely out of my ignorance of, of cast glass as a building material. I mean, wha, what's the durability like of, of cast glass in a, in a, you know, series of structures like this? Is it, is it susceptible to pitting? I mean, is the, is the surface, is the facade going to degrade over time? I mean, wha, what's it, what's it like? Cause I, I don't think I've ever looked at a project or been involved in a project involving cast glass as a major, um, you know, major feature of construction.
Yeah. Uh, that's largely due to it's being very expensive. We're using a special. We're using a special type of glass called borosilicate glass that was developed by Corning. That was developed by Corning that can withstand extreme temperature changes. And so Pyrex kitchenware, for example, is a type of borosilicate glass. So this is not normal soda lime glass. This is a special glass. The glass is denser than stone. And so it's not porous as stone, and its disintegration rate is effectively zero. Environmental scientists estimate that it would take over a million years for glass to disintegrate. And so there's not a single piece of glass ever made that is disintegrating. And it's, it's an extremely, extremely dense material that is resistant to scratches, to pitting, you know, to the kind of problems that you would encounter with stone, let's say. And it's graffiti resist, graffiti is easily, it's more easily clean than stone because stone is porous. Even the most dense, even the most dense granite is somewhat porous, whereas this is not porous at all.
How do you build vertically with it? I mean, here, sort of for the, for the Remembrance Hall, are you just stacking panels on top of each other? Are they secured to each other? Is it just one massive piece or how does that work?
They, they're literally stacked on top of each other. Each one of these elements weighs almost a ton.
Oh, wow.
And so they will be lifted by crane and literally stacked on top of each other with just a small clear silicone pad at the interface between the bottom of one and the top of the other. And, and so just the, the, the weight and gravity of it primarily holds it in place.
Interesting. Thank you. Do any other Commissioners have questions for the representatives?
The memorial is recognizing some folks who we probably should not have lost if we had not been in war. But I don't want to go off on that. Secondly, the transparency issue, I think, is very powerful with the glass because that's a very critical need in terms of media and public rights. So transparency is why the glass is, I think, so symbolic. And number three, Mr. Chairman, I had recommended that they use glass rods around the White House as part of the gates, part of the fence, except it's very expensive. Well, you know, but it would be transparent and be much better than steel, which has only a certain amount of protection and maintenance. But a glass rod, which they make, I mean, they make glass rods, even thin ones would be, wouldn't block views and would also offer significant protection. But I didn't win on that one several months ago, maybe years ago now. Hope you do.
That's two of us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other questions for our presenters? Well, with that, thank you, Melissa, Ms. Cochran, Mr. Ronan. That was really informative. Is there a motion from the Commission to approve the preliminary site development plans for the fallen journalists' memorial?
So moved.
Is there a second? Well, with that, I'll open it to the Commission for discussion, and I'll start deliberations with Commissioner Stidham.
Great, thank you very much. I can't even begin to touch on the symbolic nature of this particular memorial and the elements that come together to tell the story. I just can't do it justice. But I'll leave it to say that a visitor will not just meander through, but they will sort of experience what is a disorder into order and how the facts come together as pieces of glass rods to tell a story, leading you to the elements in the middle with the First Amendment and the Capitol in the background. I think this is a very unique memorial that tells a story that has yet to be told and has the ability to continue to tell future stories as years move forward. I think it is elegant. I think it fits well in the landscape. And we appreciate not only the presentation today, but all the coordination with Commission staff on getting us to this point. So with that, just thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Argo?
No such. I just think, yeah, it's about time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It's a, it's a great project and to see it get this far and launch from here is really wonderful. Thanks for everybody who's worked on it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chairman Levinbach?
So I just, I want to say that I think the staff made some excellent comments in the analysis. And I just want to encourage you to keep working on those issues, particularly when it comes to the maintenance, the durability of the monument. We want it to look just as nice in 50 or 100 years from now as it does when it's first installed and take, and take, I think, a little more, a little closer look on the underground irrigation and, and how the trees would be replaced over time and so that we also maintain that aspect of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Blair's not here. Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Oh, sorry, yeah. I align myself with Commissioner Stidham's comments. This is one, like the women's suffrage that we've seen a lot of. And it's, we've been moving through it and all along, every time, I'm struck by the strength of your concept and the singularity of the material and the expression in terms of, if we think of the ethos of all the other monuments, all the other buildings, this is different and it makes sense because this is the federal city. But the press is separate and apart from that. And so I think that this is a really nice sort of symbol of that. I also would commend the team and the foundation for your willingness to listen. I really do appreciate the entrance, the addition of the interests on the southeast corner of the site to address people moving from the metro. I think it has strengthened the, the movement through the site. And so I think the design is better for it. And I, again, continue looking forward to working with you. I think it's evolving quite nice.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dixon?
I associate myself with my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cash?
Only because I brought up some of these concerns last time. First of all, if that's a 15 by 15 inch piece of glass, I went back and looked at my comments. I said, this would be great if we had a 15 by 15 ish piece of glass that we could see as the same. I did, and tell me if that's not. But that said, thanks. I know, thank, thank you. So thanks for bringing that. It does, I mean, I'm sitting here at the side. It does address some of the concerns that I had about it being too clear. I still do have some reservations about the final treatment. I'm glad this is still, we're preliminary, and I encourage you to keep working on the materiality because I do worry about people walking around that area, especially in the middle of summer. Being clear is great symbolic, and I really do love the symbolism. But the visitor experience and doorways and stuff, I just encourage you to make sure that you're really looking at that as you're getting through the final design. But I do appreciate that we can see kind of with the thickness of it and how it addresses some of those concerns. So I do really want to commend you on that. Also, I just have to say that the lens in the middle, I think that that's, it's great that you are moving from a sans serif to a serif font because I wanted to note that the great journalism newspapers and all that will, will never go back to, to like an Arial or something like that. So that struck me in, in the presentation, so I want to thank you for that. But overall, I really do thank you for bringing out the, the material kind of at the size because it does address a lot of the concerns that I had last time around. And also just want to remind the suffragists, much as we all love the location, just a reminder, when you come back to the Commission, there's always going to be a lot of questions on the design, and that's part of the process we've moved through. So I look forward to that as well. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Commissioner, any, anything to add? Speaking for myself, first of all, I fully associate myself with Commissioner Cash's remarks with respect to sans serif and serif fonts. I think sans serif fonts in, in non-internet applications are an abomination and should, should never have entered the world, the world of typography, which ties into, I think, a broader concern that I have with this project. I think there's a move by the federal government to adopt more classical and neoclassical architectural design features. I don't see much of that here. And I think that is related to one of the staff concerns, which is obstruction of sightlines to the US Capitol. So I hope that the applicants will work in, in the weeks ahead to adopt at least some of our, our staff's recommendations with respect to those obstructed sightlines. It's an interesting project. I don't see anything here that would make me want to vote against preliminary approval. I think that there are some improvements that can be made, and I'm excited to see how this project comes back to us for, for final approval. Are there any other, and I'd also obviously like to thank our staff for their customary diligence and also the applicant team for a very interesting presentation. And Mr. Ronan, thank you for educating me a little bit on cast class as a, as a building material. That was quite fascinating. When I heard you were from the Midwest, my ears perked up a little bit because I was until recently living in St. Louis, Missouri. And we obviously hate Chicago, so I won't hold that against you. You stole our railroads. But, uh, thank you. It was a very interesting presentation, and I think we're all looking forward to continuing to see how this project develops.
And Mr. Chairman, I think we skipped over Commissioner Kozart.
Oh, I am so sorry, Commissioner.
Yes, and I'm also from the Midwest, so you can't skip me anymore. But I just wanted to just echo the appreciation for kind of listening to our comments and really incorporating them through the stakeholder engagement, particularly around kind of the integration of the monument into the broader city context. That's been really important. So we've seen some movement well in that direction. Mr. Ronan, your description of the kind of dappled light made me excited for maybe a video that might simulate what that looks like. That might be really exciting. That's a light ask. But it does seem like something that would help us really visual, continue to visualize what this is. So thank you. And thanks to the staff for your analysis.
Thank you, Commissioner. I apologize. It was, I misread the, the script here. I was excited. We're talking about the Midwest and baseball and railroads and I don't know. Are there any other further questions, comments, anything like that from, from the Commission? Well, with that, Madam Secretary, could you please confirm the motion second and call the roll?
Yes, the motion was made by Commissioner Stidham and seconded by Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Levinbach?
Yes.
Chairman Scharf?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes. Thank you. It appears the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you again to our applicants. And now we will move on to Agenda Item 7A, which is an informational presentation on the new stadium on the RFK campus. Laura is back with us. Thank you, Laura. If you could provide an overview and then introduce the project team for their presentation, that would be great.
Chairman, if I could just jump in for a second? My apologies, but I have to leave. So I just wanted to make you aware. No disrespect to the information presentation, but I have to be somewhere in like, like five minutes ago. So
No disrespect at all is taken, and we look forward to seeing you next month.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Great. Representatives from the District of Columbia Government and the Washington Commanders are here today to provide the Commission with an overview of the proposed new stadium on the RFK Memorial Stadium campus. The stadium site is located on axis with the US Capitol and East Capitol Street near the banks of the Anacostia River and has long been considered a strategic location. NCPC identified the importance of the site as a prominent gateway in the Legacy Plan and Monumental Core Framework Plan. In January of this year, the DC RFK Memorial Stadium Campus Revitalization Act transferred the administration of the campus from the National Park Service to the District of Columbia. The Act allows the development and use of the campus for stadium purposes, open space, and mixed-use development. In terms of NCPC's review role, under the National Capitol Planning Act, NCPC has advisory authority for district projects outside the central area. We will evaluate the project's potential impacts to the system of streets, public spaces, and important view sheds within the Longfond City. And just in addition to urban design and character considerations, impacts on NPS lands and adjacent federal facilities will be evaluated along with general consistency with policies set forth in the Comprehensive Plan for the National Capitol. Because the proposed stadium is a central piece of the broader RFK campus redevelopment and based on the applicant's timeline, the Commission's initial concept review of the stadium design is advancing first and is anticipated in early 2026. Moving forward, NCPC will work with the district on the review of the overall master plan and other district projects for the campus as they are developed. And with that, I will turn it over to Brian Hanlon, RFK Executive Director for the District of Columbia Government.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Scharf and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Brian Hanlon, and I serve as the Project Executive of the RFK Campus Redevelopment. I am joined here by Andy Van Horn of the Washington Commanders and the design firm HKS, who are the lead architects designing the new Washington Commander Stadium. I first want to acknowledge NCPC's longstanding leadership in shaping the development and advancement of the Capitol region. We appreciate the Commission's guidance as we plan for one of the most transformational projects in the district's history, the construction of the new Washington Commander Stadium and the redevelopment of the RFK campus. We have a short presentation in which we will describe our vision for revitalizing the RFK campus, a once-in-a-generation chance to transform a historic site into a dynamic and future-ready destination for Washington DC. Today, I will discuss the project's vision, economic goals, objectives, context, planning initiatives, as well as community engagement to date. We will also hear from HKS, who will describe their vision for the stadium design. The district's vision is clear, to anchor the redevelopment of the RFK campus with a world-class stadium that catalyzes a vibrant mixed-use community that includes housing, parks, open space, entertainment, and economic opportunity. In terms of economic impact, the numbers speak for themselves. The stadium is projected to generate over $14.9 billion in direct spending, including 14,000 construction jobs. In addition to the stadium, the mixed-use districts will drive $2.9 billion in direct spending and create 16,000 construction jobs. The redevelopment will also deliver approximately 6,500 new units of housing with a minimum of 30% designated as affordable. The affordability standards ensure that the benefits of redevelopment are accessible to all district residents. This economic impact will translate into sustained investment and public realm improvements, transit connectivity, and long-term stewardship of the campus. Let me briefly describe the five districts. The Stadium District will be a super bowl-ready venue and home to the Washington Commanders. The Plaza District will be an entertainment and hospitality hub filled with restaurants, shops, and entertainment options. The Riverfront District will transform into a mixed-use, transit-oriented waterfront community that blends residential, commercial, and recreational spaces. The Kingman Park District will focus on neighborhood-scaled residential and recreational areas, providing a community-oriented atmosphere. The Recreation District will center around the Fields at RFK and a new sportsplex, serving as a regional destination for youth and community sports. The area in dark green along the river is known as the Reparion Area, which is a no-build riverfront zone that is anchored by the Anacostia Trail. Together, these, these districts create a coherent urban framework anchored by transit, connected public space, and a fully accessible waterfront. The RFK Campus is a convergence point, civic and natural, historic and forward-looking. RFK is a gateway to the city, a 365-day community asset, and a place where the district's identity can be celebrated. The RFK Campus redevelopment is more than a stadium. It is a catalyst for growth and civic pride. The RFK redevelopment aligns with the Anacostia Waterfront Initiative and the district's broader planning goals. The site is included in the Anacostia Waterfront Development Zone and will comply with the Anacostia Waterfront Framework Plan. The RFK Campus Master Plan will guide the transition from a single use to a vibrant, mixed-use neighborhood. It will outline land uses, amenities, and zoning recommendations while blending with surrounding neighborhoods. The Master Plan will identify key features to serve both current and future residents, such as a new sportsplex, open space, and improved access to the Anacostia River. It will also ensure that the stadium and surrounding development are coordinated in a way that supports neighborhood integration and long-term sustainability. The Master Plan will guide urban design, circulation, parking, The Master Plan will guide urban design, circulation, parking, and the public realm. It will align with the district's comprehensive plan and support the creation of new mixed-use neighborhoods that are resilient and connected. Terms of community engagement, we've engaged deeply with the community in more than ten stakeholder meetings and forums this year. We have been intentional to hear from a range of stakeholders and their feedback has been invaluable. Community members have consistently emphasized the importance of waterfront access, preserving open space, and minimizing traffic impacts. These priorities are directly shaping our assumptions in site planning, circulation design, and the open space strategy. This engagement reaffirms our commitment to ensuring that the benefits of the RFK Campus are broadly shared. And now, to delve deeper into the design concept of the Stadium District, we have the pleasure of welcoming, welcoming Andy Van Horn from the Washington Commanders and their stadium design team, HKS. They will discuss their vision for the stadium design, which is set to become a landmark, landmark venue for both sports and entertainment.
Thank you, Brian. We're very pleased to be here today, uh, presenting the commission. Uh, Chair and Commission Members, I am Andy Van Horn, Head of Real Estate for the Washington Commanders. Uh, as an introduction for our stadium architect, I did want to ensure you that we, the commanders, recognize the importance of this site and this project uh, within DC and within the the capital of of our nation. Um, we also recognize the same importance of being here early with you to make sure we're showing up uh, for this informational presentation and soliciting feedback. We are rarely pleased to have HKS here today, given they've developed multiple dome stadiums across the country, uh, many of the ones you'd recognize. Um, and they've also done uh, incredible work for us already, developing a set of principles that incorporate the prominence of this site uh, along the Monumental Axis, the importance of the convergence of the site at the edge of the city and the Anacostia watershed. And then it reflects, their their principles reflect the history of the site for our team and for DC. Um, and with that, I'd like to turn it over to Lance Evans, the Lead Designer for HKS Sports and the Partner with HKS.
Thank you. Love the sneakers, by the way.
Yeah, they are pretty cool. He promised me that he's gonna give me some of those. Um, thank you all. It's a, it's an honor to be here today and we're so excited uh, to be here. My name is Lance Evans. I'm a design partner at HKS Architects. Uh, I've had the honor of working with the NFL for over twenty years. Uh, this would be my fifth NFL stadium to work on and this, I can't tell you how excited our firm is to get about it. When we start to talk about design, first off, it starts with listening. I don't know if this is appropriate, but I like to ask, is there any football fans on the commission? Yeah, I think what's cool about that answer for us is it doesn't really matter what the answer is. What we're designing is an entertainment venue for everyone. One, the stadium is a catalyst. It embodies the legacy of RFK Stadium that Andy mentioned. It's one where nature is embedded into the experience and one that is uniquely DC. A unified and shared bowl where everybody gets to contribute to the energy and the action and expresses the power of the end. This is going to be the best home for football, the National Football League, but it's also a three hundred and sixty-five destination for this community. We have three core design principles that we've anchored our conversation around. The first being born of the district, a true community asset, one that's integrated into the community and represents the uniqueness of this special place. Second is inspired by the legacy, but paving the way for the future. The memory of the championship culture, the roar of the crowd, the rhythm that happened at RFK Stadium. And the last is one that created to ignite. This is a football-force stadium without compromise that can host the world's greatest events. When I talk about born, inspired of the district, what I mean is we've heard of some rich architectural history, but it's also the power of the public realm, the curated park spaces, the natural environments, the community and the neighborhoods, all the items that make this place so unique to our, this community and our nation's capital. It's a new landmark for the district, a celebration of the culture and the community, one that's woven into the district fabric, a cultural hub for DC. You can't help but get goosebumps looking at these historic images about the legacy of RFK, the rhythm, the roar of the crowd, the bouncing stands, the championships that came here. Our design is about capturing that moment, but the next chapter of this historic ground, an architectural presence that is approachable from all angles, an architecture that's built to endure and designed to inspire, a home to the next generation of Commander's fans. Now, this is what we're talking about. The fun, the excitement, the entertainment worldwide, whether it be Final Four or football, brand opportunities or conventions, this stadium is built, is going to be designed for that. The heart of football, built for Washington DC, the ultimate home-field advantage, a stage for the district and the nation, and one that is going to transform. Into this promise for us, when the Harrises, we were honored to be selected by the Harrises and the commanders, they asked us to create a truly unique piece of architecture, one that's representative of this place and their brand. And we call it one-of-one design, something that could exist nowhere else in the planet, but on that site for that team, for this community, and this nation. So thank you for your time today and we look forward to this process with you. I'll throw it over to Andy to talk about next step.
Yeah, I'll just kind of look at where we've been and what we're doing. We did receive uh, council approval uh, in September. Uh, so we were moving forward with deal documentation and finalizing that with the district now. We have commenced uh, some early planning and there'll be a planning process moving forward, not only for the stadium, but for the mixed-use environment for the next year or two. Uh, we will break ground, uh, assuming our permits are ready to go on stadium-enabling work in early 2026. That's moving some existing utilities out of the footprint. Um, then early 2029 is when we expect the zoning to be done for all that housing and mixed-use environment around the stadium, so when we can break ground on the the retail, the restaurants, and and the apartments. By summer 2030, the district uh, expects to deliver a a community sportsplex. And then by fall of 2030, we expect to be opening the stadium uh, for football and events. And that's our presentation. So I'll ask Brian to come back up if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Um,
Thank you.
Are there any questions from Commissioners?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what's that, twenty thirty?
Twenty thirty.
I gotta put that on my calendar. Good.
I do want to say that I'm, I'm, I'm regretting not wearing my Andy Van Horn shoes, but when I put this suit on, I thought, nah, that's just too much.
I uh, I've been around when they had so much resistance within the Kingston, Kingston, Kingston Park community to the stadium being there because of traffic and a lot of other things. And I know that's been a hurdle for you all to overcome. And uh, your outreach has been exceptional and I hope that you were able to elicit information and soothe some concern because it's a big player in a, in a small neighborhood for people with little houses and you know, it's local folk. So I'm, that's gonna be a big, big ongoing challenge.
If I could add to that, there has been, you know, we've had a community meeting in uh, twenty-second of October.
Yes.
One that was uh, I think the nineteenth of November.
Yes.
I've been to both. Um, there might have been another one too, but I've been to those two.
Yes.
The, the reception from the community has been overwhelmingly positive.
Good.
Uh, we've had hundreds of people in the room, um, overwhelmingly positive and a lot of excitement. And I have to applaud uh, the commanders and the entire team um, on the side of the district from just being in a real listening posture
Yep.
and incorporating what has been heard from the community into what we're doing from a master planning perspective.
Yeah, I mean, people parking cars in yards and all that kind of stuff, things that got to be a real problem.
Yeah.
Really, but uh, I mean, not without their permission, but sometimes we're making money at economics.
That actually relates to a question I was gonna ask. Uh, on the master plan, and obviously it's sort of notional at this point, but there doesn't seem to be an area dedicated for either surface or multi-layer parking. Is that part of the plan? Will that be part of the plan?
Yeah, great question. Day one will actually have its structured uh, parking design and then there'll be surface lots for day one. But then over time, as the site is developed, it'll all be structured parking for game day events.
Even though we know metro people, but you know, really be serious, people wanna drive.
I'm gonna walk.
Yeah, well, I, well, I could walk by them too. Well, I could maybe. Uh, also, I was, we're part of the NCPC effort when we designed this space. And my pitch was that this is a, the east where the sun rises and meets our, our community. Powerful from Native Americans and indigenous and religious folks.
Amen.
The sun rising, you know, from into the stadium area. And we had devoted it to being a natural park for water being brought up and a lot of, you know, creative things, but uh, you gotta, this is a useful, a useful uh, use of the land and uh, much more than maybe just having, but you're putting in parks and others. In terms of your, the, the uh, athletic center.
Yeah.
Uh, that will be Olympic capacity, I'm assuming.
Well, let me, let me touch on a few points that you, you raised. One, the Riparian Area, which I mentioned in the, in the, that, that is a protected no-build zone.
Yeah.
And and in addition to that, thirty percent of the site is gonna be open space for recreation. So a significant amount of the area is actually gonna be green and open and and uh, and beautiful. As far as the sportsplex goes, uh, right now, we're, we're putting out a solicitation for um, essentially a feasibility study that will help determine the optimum, optimal uses. Um, I was part of the programming and business planning for the Prince George's County Sports and Learning Complex, which is adjacent to the uh, the, the current stadium, Northwest Stadium. And I would imagine we go through the similar process of the design elements that go in are coming from what we hear from the marketplace, the community and and the region. But it will be a uh, a world-class uh, venue.
Yeah, is there gonna be any outdoor tracks, indoor tracks, even even better?
The, the concept plan, the thought right now is is that there would be a two-hundred-meter indoor track, but we're early in the process. We gotta get through that.
Of course, because we have no capacity in the city now to uh, you know, and to encourage a, a host state track event
Mm-hmm.
that of Olympic size, if you will, campaign.
Right.
So that'd be great. But I'm, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm excited, waiting to see it. Can't wait till 2030.
After we finish fishing Constitution Gardens, we'll go for a foot race.
Well, I know we fish in the Anacostia. I, my home is right off the Anacostia River, in Anacostia River East. That's what I call it, the whole, I call it the land of R. I shared that with you.
I know, I, I love that.
The land of R, which is Anacostia River East, which does include the areas in, on the other side, not just Anacostia historically, but the entire space, which is the land of R, which you guys will be looking at from the ballpark.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do, do any other Commissioners have questions? Uh, hearing none, um, I, I guess we'll start deliberations with Commissioner Kozart.
Uh, thank you and just appreciate uh, the work of staff and providing this advisory uh, guidance on this project and um, Mr. Hanlon spoke to this, but I just want to underscore the importance of this around the mayor's growth agenda as it relates to retaining residents and attracting residents and businesses, right? Our residents expect the types of amenities that Mr. Hanlon talked about that are part of this entirety of this area. And it's just so uh, it's, it's, it's really important to be able to leverage that now that we've been able to uh, bring it to the district from uh, the federal government. And then, of course, for attracting residents and also attracting businesses and encouraging people to be entrepreneurs. I, one of the things we've heard from residents, but we've also heard from our local entrepreneurs, how important, how excited they are
Yep.
about working with the commanders. I know the commanders have heard it, but even, you know, in some of the planning meetings, that has come up and there's a lot of energy around that. And that's a growth industry and so we really wanna um, take advantage of that. So very excited about that. Um, and appreciate this informational presentation because as we go on, it'll be less about kind of these bigger pieces that are drivers for this work, um, but encourage us as Commissioners to keep all of those things in mind. Thanks again.
Commissioner Argo?
Yeah, it's really appreciated presentation hype iron. Brian and I had the same job.
Oh, wow.
Yes, we did.
How's he doing?
Oh, I have no idea. It was a while ago. Um, great to see you in this place. Uh, that's wonderful. I don't have any additional questions. This is really exciting. And and so glad to to get an update and uh, to see where we are in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Vice Chairman Levinbach?
I have no comments.
Um, thank you, Commissioner or Vice Chairman. Um, Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Thank you. This is an exciting project. I feel bad you didn't get a shout-out for the suit. Derek on brand, I like him. Um, I think it's really exciting that you're coming back to the district. I don't like football enough to go to Northwest Stadium, but I would go to RFK. It's a haul for those of us that live in the district, so it's nice to see the commanders coming back to the city as well as that you're making a community here and not just a stadium. I like that there's, you know, community amenities, additional housing, additional retail. I think it's gonna be a great asset as opposed to just a headache for people that live over there. Um, and I'm excited that you're coordinating with the community to make it so. You both did good work.
Even if you don't like football, we've been assured that it will be a three hundred sixty-five-day-a-year venue, so I think there's something for everything. Commissioner Dixon, anything to add?
Well, I would want to say that we need to recognize the mayor of our city for what she's done to pull this together, working with the federal government, with the president, and with so many other forces. Uh, and I think we gotta recognize that this is a, something that was significantly, I mean, it wouldn't have happened unless she and her team pushed it. And uh, everything else came in place once that was done. So I think that's something that needs to be recognized and hopefully now and in the future will be remembered and recognized. Last thing I want to ask for as you move forward with your plans is that you remember the indigent, indigent people. We had a lot of controversy around names. We got past that. Maybe this is a time to reflect some presence of the indigent people in this community with some of the work you're doing along the water, some symbolism. And which would be, I'm, I'm pushing for this on the other side as well. Some of you may not know, but most of the Native Americans, indigenous, indigenous, indigenous people in this community lived on the east side, the Anacostia Riverside. But I think the river is significant for that kind of recognizing recognition. So it'd really be a very masterful thing to show some respect uh, now, given what you went through and did manage to get through. So that last comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Cash?
Uh, thanks so much. Uh, as the, the Council Chairman's representative, I want to thank the team for all the work they did and and kind of finalizing all the details with the council last summer. Uh, it was a great, it was a great uh, interaction to, to, it was a great uh, interaction to, to work with. Um, also want to echo uh, Commissioner Kozart's comments in looking forward to all the different pieces that are gonna come of this. Um, it's a very big project, but it's gonna spawn several of these different districts. It's going to spawn a lot of spin-off projects, like I look forward to hopefully seeing a metro rail station coming uh, sometime in the future. Uh, we mentioned Kingman Park and back, once upon a time, there were plans for a Kingman Park Metro. I, I hope to, to see some of those dusted off the shelf, meaning like back in the sixties, there were plans for it. So, so I, I still look forward to a lot of those, those projects that are gonna be coming back to us. Um, and again, thank the team and everyone that was involved in, in getting this over the finish line. So thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I have to add this. As a former chairman of the city council here, I gotta remember to say that it was not only the mayor, but the city council that had a significant role, has often forgotten the role they played in making things that the executive branch wants to happen to happen. So just tell the chairman I
Thank you, Commissioner Cash and Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Henderson?
All right, just looking forward to uh, any future actions and discussions and reviews of this as, as it comes along. It's a, it's a big project that um, it's worth us uh, taking our time on.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, speaking for myself, first of all, as always, uh, thank you to our staff for uh, their careful review of this project, which I'm sure will continue in, in the months ahead. Uh, and thank you to both the mayor's office, uh, the team and really everybody involved in this exciting project. I think really going back to classical antiquity, uh, arenas and stadiums have played a vital role uh, in the urban cityscape. I think there were several decades in American history where we unfortunately really got away from that, uh, much to the detriment of uh, fan experience. Um, I think urban planning, uh, and really just uh, the role that stadiums have played in American life. I think it's always exciting to see a stadium uh, come back to a city. Uh, I think with that comes certain uh, I'd say complications or responsibilities. I think being on such an important view shed in Washington DC in our nation's capital is vitally important. Uh, I'm familiar with HKS's work. Uh, it's obviously an architectural firm that's uh, designed many iconic uh, stadium venue and I hope that uh, as the project proceeds, we obviously have very limited details on what the stadium will look like. Uh, but I hope it incorporates uh, architectural features in keeping with the Capitol more generally, classical, neoclassical elements uh, that will uh, align it with the Capitol that it will essentially overlook. Um, but most of all, I just, I think this is a really exciting project for the future of Washington DC. Uh, and I look forward to seeing how the project develops in the coming months. And thank you again for taking the time to uh, spend some time with us here today. Are there any further comments or questions? On anything? Well, then we've arrived at the end of this month's meeting. Our next meeting will be on Thursday. Well, then we've arrived at the end of this month's meeting. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, January 8th at 1:00 P.M. I hope everybody has a very Merry Christmas, a very happy holiday season, and a very, very Happy New Year. 2026 is going to be a big one for this commission, uh, and hopefully a great year for everybody involved, so thank you.